Good afternoon. Today is the Wednesday, February 19, 2014, meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. We have established quorum with one member absent and a disposition of minutes. Has anyone had a chance to look at that? Any changes? Any comments?
I didn't see anything that jumped out at me, so I'll move the acceptance minutes.
A second has been made. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. There are no cases today on the docket as this has been designated more or less as a Title 23 zoning code work session. But I would just jump ahead and make sure as far as the city planner and director, if they have anything that they wanted to add in here today.
I don't have much to -- no, I'd rather we just focus on the work session.
I can just state that the project we reviewed last week or two weeks ago on the Lambourns did go through the Shade Tree Commission last Thursday evening and their recommendation was accepted.
Moving ahead, let's see, getting into communications, our work session begins. Let's see, John gave us emailed a electronic copy of the -- Of the city of Athens proposed zone uses. Does anybody have any comment, questions directed to John or just general comments to be made there?
Not really, except there are a lot of pieces missing. As you say, currently permitted versus things we don't address. You'll see in your packet, I also earlier today printed out the copies for the Zanesville and Lancaster business sides. Did you guys get copies of that?
Yes.
Did we have an extra copy?
Jeff?
No, yes. No, that's okay. I made eight, but I wasn't sure how many people -- how many did we?
The only reason why I bring this one to the forefront is I find them very clunky. I mean, if we start looking and trying to parse out, if you looked at Zanesville code, for instance, what we're looking at there in terms of businesses, we have commercial, office, industrial, and then special uses. The special uses we'll ignore because that's historical overlay, conservation overlay. What I found interesting, of course, is the office industrial districts, as well as they have community, regional, downtown commercial, highway commercial. So they've parsed it out a little bit more generally, but if you start looking at their groups, let's try to look at maybe page, what would it be? This would be three, page three of eight or two of eight. They've covered almost everything they can think of. I'm not sure if we want to go that direction because it gets pretty long. They have literally 28, 29 sections for the permitted commercial districts. Beauty shops, barber shops, hairstyling, ice cream, candy, popcorn, nut, yogurt stores, card gift shops, domestic appliance repair shops, domestic appliance stores, including radio, TV, stereo, lighting, clock, music stores. I'd say I'm not sure if that's the direction we want to go in. And again, I really, the commentary I have on this is essentially, it's got a lot. I mean, okay, so now I'm looking at section group H. That's it, they have groups as well. And again, I'm trying to absorb it. To tell you the truth, I do not know enough about Zanesville to say if it's working or not.
I would guess Zanesville, like Athens, like a lot of communities, their zoning code is, on some level, is copy and pasting
Yeah.
from a basic framework that was established years ago and it should have, or what an attorney told them should have. That's just an assumption, it's just a guess. I've been to Zanesville several times. It's a nice enough community. It's not as vibrant, in my opinion, as a place like Athens is.
No.
There's a lot of vacant buildings, there's a lot of, you know, empty lots. I don't think their economy is as robust as Athens, as Athens might be.
Okay, and in that case, if you start looking at the Lancaster, it's very similar in style. I guess the question I would have to bring about is I'm looking, still searching for, I think we had a conversation about performance standards for zoning or something, a little bit of more flexibility in terms of what we want to see. I've still been looking for those. I haven't seen one, but maybe I could have just gone right past and not recognized what we're thinking of, or were thinking of at the time. And that's all I'll say. I mean, you know, I'll let you guys hash it out some more.
A form-based code.
Form-based, is that a guess?
Form, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
We, there was a, probably about 20 years ago, and Nancy, maybe you recall from some of your classes, that there was at one time a theory called performance zoning. And I don't recall, I know there's, I have a book on, I believe, in the Code Office that was Steve Pearson's, but I don't recall exactly what it meant. I thought it was about giving more flexibility based on quality, perhaps?
It had odor detection and light, and it was mainly early environmental, I think, would be my guess. It was prohibit, prohibited noxious facilities in certain areas, especially close to residential.
Sure.
And we, I think they cut it out, the planning commission, the planning commission of the day cut it out a while ago.
I know that was discussed at the comprehensive plan level because I believe Alan Geiger brought it up many years ago. I was kind of suspect with it because I wasn't sure how you'd monitor something like that and what it would look like.
Right.
I looked at it as almost an abridgement of the PEDs. The concept of a planning and development is that you have more flexibility because you're looking at it in totality. But how you do that to a zone or zoning without, you know, multiple conditions of overlays and saying, this is what we want to see, and the aesthetics side. I know many years ago, we had some, this must be at least 15 years ago, I think we had, somebody bring up the Dayton, a Dayton housing code of some kind, you know, no cars here, certain type of, you know, couldn't have this, this, and this in your house, in your area, as well as the coloration, almost sort of style that were out there. And this is, as I say, 15 years ago, brought up as aesthetics. And that's, we got, you know, that kind of got shot down real quick, if my memory is correct. Because again, how do you grade that? I mean, this is like historic district. What period do you want your historic district to be? What do we have and what do we want it to be? And that's the unknown there. Back to businesses, though.
But you, when you came to my class, you talked about form-based zoning, or anyway, at some point you had a PowerPoint that talked about how they were redoing, not Highland, what's the name of the H, Hamilton Road in Columbus.
Right.
And I don't know how it went. I mean, I can't, I don't remember what the code looked like. I mean, form-based codes are very complex.
They can be, definitely, yeah.
But if we say we know what we want, can't, could you, could you find someone to draft it for us?
We talked about trying to hire somebody.
I don't know hire, but I guess they wouldn't do it out of the goodness of their heart, would they?
You never know. They ask nicely.
We talked about this before, and we did talk about utilizing a consultant in order to actually produce.
But we don't want him or her to tell us what they want, we want.
Right.
We want to say what we want and...
Yeah, that's a community discussion. In one way, I mean, you could look at, it's just a planning process, whether it's a comprehensive plan for the entire city, or you're just saying a few corridors or a zoning plan. You go through that process, you know, you do some public engagement to find out what the community wants and what elected officials and planning commissioners are thinking. And then they gather all that information, they make recommendations, and ideally we would change our code to conform with the plan. We didn't really do that with our last comprehensive plan. We didn't update our zoning code with what was in that plan. I think there's a lot of history as to why that may not have been. But that's, that would be the best way to approach that, I think.
But you know, if you go back and look at that, at that Pogomeyer effort, there was a sort of form-based component, at least on Stimson.
Right, right.
So that would be, and I don't know what guidance, I was actually going toward that bookshelf to find it and see, because I had some original materials, and I thought, they must have given us something, you know?
They did.
Pogomeyer?
Yeah, for Stimson.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a few pages in the, in the plan. I could bring that for the next meeting, just to see as a reference for, or conceptual of. They didn't get into very much detail, though.
No, they didn't.
It was very simple, you know, just as far as, you know, changing the bulk controls and where to put parking and things like that.
I remember they wanted to pull the buildings closer into the street
Correct, right.
and rather than parking and put parking in back.
Right. Wide sidewalks with zero setback was the recommendation.
That's common.
Some sort of mixed use. And with, you know, with Stimson being right between two residential neighborhoods. One is very high density, of course, the R3 off-campus student housing, and then the near east side, which is a lot more owner-occupied. It does get a lot of cross-traffic there with pedestrians and bikes as people are heading to campus. So I think that was, it was a logical recommendation for that corridor. It's also a corridor that has a lot of potential for redevelopment, I think, even today.
That's actually kind of in the mix right now, isn't it? I mean, discussion of the northeast spur.
Just call it the South Green Extension.
Oh, sorry, southeast, is that what it's called today?
Boy, it's got every direction in the world.
Southeast, okay, I thought it was northeast.
It was northwest.
It ain't northwest. There is snow ways northwest.
Well, because the road travels north to get to the end of the unimproved Mill Street and then heads west.
Just don't put student life in charge of naming directions. But, you know, another thing, and this is part of what, one of my neighbors was saying, what were you guys talking about, about that, about that house on Richland Avenue? And here's the bottom line that I see, and that's what probably kept me away from my bookcase, other than the stuff I brought out of my office. And what we have are houses that are more valuable and generate more rent than a business would. And so they might at some point demolish them, but I don't see it anytime soon because of the, because of the housing problem or the housing situation here. And so, you know, you have to add that to the mix, too. So it is not going to look perfect like their scenario. So this is how it could look, but, you know, not.
Right.
Because of the houses that will stay there in their same shape.
Well, when you want to define aesthetics, I think something like that also comes into play where a house that is not tended to well by a landlord, the property is degraded, you know, does that enter into your, the definition that you would have for the aesthetics and the value that you would assess, you know, as well as things that are going to be built? You know, are you, then are you beginning to introduce current structures? And would they arrive at such a level where they would not conform to an aesthetic judgment that, that the community would make or the planning commission would, you know, set into motion with any type of work that we do here?
I myself have always been leery of stepping onto the aesthetic side of zoning and code, probably because I grew up in Long Island where that was, there was layer upon layer. I mean, there were whole neighborhoods of English Tudor and nothing but English Tudor and, you know, all the way down to the slate roofs that you were required to have.
Right.
And no pools, and other ones had different looks in terms of what they want to do. I mean, a lot of it probably fell out of the code, if you're talking about Levittown or something like that, but, you know, to layer that much on in a rural area like this, I'm not sure if it works well.
Well, and just to be devil's advocate in this, you know, if someone were to say that in order for us to regenerate within the community as far as new structures that would fit the future more, that basically if you didn't have something like that in place, that someone could hold on to property way beyond its value to the community as a whole in terms of how it looks, how it fits into the community, and in other words, that it would basically restrict the development of future property of that property, simply because someone was still trying to milk it for, you know, whatever they could.
Well, are you talking about repair conditions or enforcement of, you know, quality standards? In other words, what we have, I think is very nervous in terms of house paint or, on the side of a house, basically it has to be waterproof. That's as far as we go, right?
Somebody can replace white siding if there's a hole in it with a piece of gray siding, and there's nothing we can do about it.
Yeah, I mean, they can make a patchwork right now. So do we, do we upgrade it to that point? And then, of course, there's the counterargument each time there, is the people who can afford to upgrade to their house.
And I'm not endorsing that.
No, I mean...
I'm suggesting, though, that the community for most, for the most part is grown out, you know, unless you were to annex property around Athens that were pretty well, the houses fall.
And a lot of it actually is non-conforming as it stands now. So the restriction there is the code we have presently would inhibit some of the replacement of these structures. I mean, technically, my house would, to rebuild my house where it is in the same footprint, I'd need a variance, I'd need several variances. Side setback, rear setback, both.
And you'd probably get them because most people are loath to take somebody's property rights.
Yeah.
So I think that, you know, this, I would say, to add on to what our J A said, remember our Stimson Avenue Plan, not ours, but O U's, and their solution was, and I don't think the council at the time found it to be tenable, to take all of the single ownerships and put it in a...
You're talking about the Mill Street.
Mill Street Plan, yeah, and that one advocated for putting it in one large parcel, which would have been a nightmare.
Well, I mean, somebody would have to be willing to sell their property. If I remember, they had like 120 different...
Different owners, right, yes.
About the same amount of lots, but there were a few lots that some people owned, and there was no incentive to do it either, I mean, for the various landlords.
No, but there was discussion of eminent domain, but I just, it was, to some extent, it was somebody's retirement income.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And you hate to, I mean, you'd rather have an incentive-based system, good of the whole. I don't know if there is that, but...
But in a community that's, what, 80% rental?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four, okay.
Splitting here. You know, then how do we begin to make those kind of changes? You know, not saying that we want to go forward and be draconian or anything like that, but, you know, do we, do we offer less flexibility, more flexibility than in what we're trying to do here and what we're trying to write or propose?
Are you referring to residential specifically, or?
Residential, but community, just the community in general, because there's, there's not just like single, formerly single-family homes that are rentals, there's
Right.
there's larger structures and, you know, these are, these are kind of things that, you know, when we talked about maybe proposing that, the idea that the city is thinking about going more to the south in terms of encouraging business, things of that nature, because it, really, there's, there's no place to develop unless you are going to be doing some massive urban renewal project or something.
Well, if you, okay, let's, let's take it out, and what restricts development right now in the city would be setback requirements, lot size requirements, flood plain issues. You know, I look at Athens Mold Machine for Business. I know some, the philosophy out there that you could say the rental is a business and therefore the residential's a business now. So if I look at the trends, and I've been watching this, and Nancy has too for a long time, it used to be that a lot of the issues came, there used to be, there's actually supposed to be a Housing Board of Appeals, which hasn't met and is not even, there's nobody on it, because at this point, most of the time, that was being driven by somebody saying, I don't want to, I've got a restriction, a roof, height of a roof, size of a window for my rental, and that's where it come into play. And again, we do zoning board, we do zoning side, not housing regulations, but the housing regulations would be where you could actually start doing what you're talking about, which is do the increased, upscale, the appearance and the look of this. And again, because what's, has occurred over time is that landlords seem to be willing to fix the thing rather than go for a variance. When they're coming to the zoning board appeals, it's because there is actually a restriction in terms of footprint or a size or something, whereas they're willing to pay the money to upgrade their housing stock most of the time. Most of the time, they want a dollar amount at the other end, which is a restriction of parking or, or, you know, a footprint at that point. So, you know, if we're talking about trying to do the aesthetic side, maybe we should be looking at the housing, and I haven't looked at housing regulations in a long time. I think, I don't, I assume it's, what, Title 21, nine? Is it nine?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, yeah.
I, one of the things, we should someday update that to match the International Code Council, ICC Property Maintenance Code, which is what ours is modeled off of, it's just outdated. But there are not many changes, it's almost word for word, even today, from what that code is. There's, there are some comments in there about, I wouldn't say aesthetics, but workmanship like manner that we don't have currently. There's been arguments about drywall on houses, people don't paint it, leave a white spackle, and we sit there and say, no, we want it painted to match the rest of the wall, and they argue it is the same color as the rest of the wall, so it's been, and the newer code kind of clears that up a little bit, so, to an extent, but really nothing technical in regards to overall aesthetics.
Again, but it's important to note that, you know, form-based codes and aesthetics, you can go as far as you want into aesthetics, or you can go as little as you want into aesthetics. We already address form in our bulk controls, but we just, we just address minimums. It has to be at least 10 feet off the lot line or eight feet off. You know, a form-based code might just say, it must be at zero, and it must be this length. If you want to have a complete corridor such as a Court Street, your building must go from lot to lot, period. Parking must be in the rear. If we want mixed use, you have to have commercial, and your residential has to be on the second and third floor. This is the mid, this is the maximum height, or this is the height that you have to build to, and that's it. You don't have to say, these are the colors, these are the materials, these, you don't have to get into that part of it. And it's really just, form-based can be as simple as adjusting your bulk controls, changing minimums to maximums. You know, if you're talking about multi-unit residential, that might be something, if you're not satisfied with the quality that we're getting right now, maybe there's portions of our, of our zoning code that you would want to get into deeper aesthetics, or requiring more, you know, just a list of materials that must be present, whether it's brick, whether it's wood, whether it's, you know, three-tab roofing instead of dimensional or something like that, if you just want to get into, just so that things have a little bit more order to them. But you don't have to get into colors, you don't have to get into the, the type of windows or whether they have gables, or whether they have front porches, or cupolas, or anything like that. Those are arbitrary, they can be arbitrary, but you can get into that as well. So just because we're talking about form doesn't mean we're getting into saying, you know, you've got to have a Victorian or a Queen Anne, or a mid-twentieth-century commercial project. It's really just about saying, this is where we want things to be located, and sometimes it's because you're saying we have other goals involved, and, you know, our form right now is built around a vehicle. And does it make sense for Stimson Avenue to have the same vehicular-oriented projects as East State Street does? Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. Those are up for debate, I think, but I just want to clarify that, you know, we can get hung up on the aesthetics, and when you start talking about aesthetics, people immediately assume you're going to regulate color and the quality or the type of a gutter or the type, and you don't have to go down that path. Those are, those are options. Some communities do, of course, especially if they have historic neighborhoods. Some communities opt to do that on their own, when you have homeowners' associations, University Estates would be a good example of that. The city doesn't regulate the aesthetics at University Estates, but a homeowners' association will. So, and some people opt to get into that as well.
So what you're talking about comes back to what we were discussing in terms of, like, our, let's say, B3s, B3 subsets, B3 East State Street, B3 Stimson, B3 Carpenter, I mean, they're all, do we want to break it down to that? I mean, when you start saying, you know, we talked about comprehensive plan for Stimson right now, you know, the buildings in front, parking in back, there's only so much room you can put the parking in back.
Right.
Because you've got, you know, you've got constraints there. Do we say, do you change the parking requirements by zone, too? In other words, by subset?
Those are certainly things you would, that should probably be part of a discussion, if you want a different mix, you know? If you don't think that the parking requirements for a neighborhood or a stretch of commercial that has a lot of residential very close by makes the same as one where people are, it's almost a given that you're going to be driving somewhere on a Saturday or to run your errands after work, those are just options, I think. But those are definitely things that should probably be discussed.
Okay.
We have the model of the bike shop that's fairly recently done on Stimson, and you could say, I don't think that there's been a shortage of parking, but of course he doesn't have residential above it, but I think that worked out.
Right.
That's an example of one that has worked.
Well, he did get parking. He has his parking off the side of a campus.
Right, he does, but he doesn't have residential, but it works.
Right.
Because I think the plan had no parking on the streets as it went forward. I mean, Pogomeyer's, not that we would adopt it, but...
Yeah, and there's parking, you have parking in some section. I don't know if you have it over there, further up Stimson, I think there's parking for two hours.
Yeah.
What I find interesting right now is I see the telephone pole, the power lines, poles for the electric lines are being moved on Stimson. I'm wondering if that's in response to the Belavino going straight up the side, because when they're constructing...
It is.
It is. So we've actually been moving the AEP poles because of our construction standards or what we ended up with, which would be, again, we're talking about that front, you know, up to the curb view of Stimson there, and now as a result, they say, okay, that's too close to the, kids can reach out the window and drop their sneakers on, I guess.
We're not.
We're not?
We're not moving it.
They are.
It's between AEP and the developer, so...
Okay.
I mean, I still contend, and I, maybe I'm lost here, that, you know, some of the issues that we talked about were, you know, neighborhood preservation and still having the little vibrant business districts. I'm still concerned about height and, of course, the parking. And in my case, parking has been the over-parking, the over, overage of parking on these projects when they come to us.
But do you mean that you think that we demand too many parking places?
No, what I've seen is, in many of these plans, is more than enough parking.
Oh, you want, you know, because it seems to me that there's never enough.
And it'd be, I'd like to see via little dots, you know how they do Google Earth, what like Mill Street, Stewart, and the population was even 10 years ago versus now with the expansions of the larger apartment complexes.
Well, are you saying that your assumption, your hypothesis is that there's less density now or more density in something like Stimson?
More density in terms of population. I'm not sure where all those students came from that are going to, like, the Mill Iron projects and...
What are they doing, adding 200 a year? Aren't they a high university? Would that be a good clue?
Maybe.
Okay.
Well, we've had other large apartment complexes built, so...
Yeah, but it usually takes more than a couple of years, and if you, if you're two years into a project and you're adding 200 a year, you have to have 400 beds just to break even. And we haven't had a big one lately. We've had a few small Mill Iron.
But I'm amazed at the number of housing units that now have little signs on them, Athens Realty and other things like that.
So you would say that sign ordinance redo worked?
Oh, I don't know about that, but I just know that what was a single-family house is...
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes.
And I see it in other places where a sign was not put up, but I'm amazed, actually, at the houses that are competitive as rental properties. I think some of my neighbors will be shocked when these stay, so...
They're going to be shocked pretty soon after that last BZ meeting.
Well, I think that that's the issue. We're going to be a watering hole if we're not careful. Except on this also.
Okay, so, all right, sorry.
Well, I was just going to suggest, you know, we've kind of gone through the Rs, we've gone into the, going into the Bs, and just, you know, it seems as though we're still trying to define, you know, what shape, what form this is, the codes might take in the future, that we're not defining it in ways of projecting what we would want to see in certain areas first, before we go in and start to clean out the code itself. You know, it seems when I'm listening to all of you, you know, and John and Paul on occasion, that we're still stuttering here a little bit, like I am right now, as far as what we want the code to do in the future. And when we talk about, you know, having that vibrancy, having the flexibility, that, you know, we haven't really discussed as, a little bit here and there, but we haven't really discussed where we thought the city was going to go in terms of housing, in terms of how much business we want, what kind of business we want, things of that nature, which is, you know, I think... which is, I guess, can be kind of an endless, infinite discussion. But at the same time, I think some of that might help us in the future, in terms of when we talk about overlays, you know, how much do we want to use overlays, as opposed to, you know, using them too much? You know, do we want to be able to sit down and say, you know, certain specific areas would make sense to have overlay in terms of what the usage might be in a particular I guess what I'm suggesting is, you know, do we want to backtrack in terms of our conversation a little bit, rewind, and?
Well, it's, it's good, probably a good idea to do that. The unknown here, of course, when you start talking about business zones, is, we don't, you know, we're not speaking for the businesses that will go in or won't go in.
Right, right.
I mean, if you look at Court Street, you know, the number one complaint is, oh, parking the drag. You know, we, we know parking's difficult, just because you have to do some parallel parking, you've got meters.
Parking garage.
Parking garage, yes, and a parking garage is there. You know, we've just had this discussion about trying to change the mix for the B3 up north of State Street, which of course, has been shot down multiple times at the council level.
For good reason.
What?
For good reason. But I want you to think about where you go to shop uptown, and most of us did use that North Court Street location, but now it's getting strangled, I think, with bars and hamburger joints.
There's no more body shop there? There used to be subtle bug, I used to go, because I could walk to, drop my car off and walk back.
It's all temporary oriented toward the upstairs residence. But if you, and if you go down, and I remember Joanie Kornansky saying, this is, Stimson is where we all go to shop. And, you know, I, I don't know that we all go to shop, but we go to the post office, we go to the bank, we go to the cleaners. That's where a lot of our, our facilities are that are useful.
Well, it used to be Bob's there, too, and Mark's.
Yeah, now there's a busy day market and the pharmacy.
But a lot of people still drive that. I mean, I think the students are the ones who are using it the most at this point, so it's only a matter of time before this, you know, you drive to the post office, you don't walk to the post office, do you?
Oh, no.
Same here. You know, so that we're back to, it doesn't matter whether it's on East State or, you know, Stimson at that point.
But, but do you, do you drive to the post office because the Stimson corridor is designed to encourage vehicles?
Mm-hmm.
And do you walk uptown because the Court Street corridor encourages pedestrian behavior?
Get out of your car and.
And Nancy gave a really good example there, that Court Street, the businesses there serve the people that live above and around. Stimson, because it's car-oriented, serves people who drive cars. If Stimson were to have similar controls as Court Street, it might become a commercial corridor for people that live right in that neighborhood, might become, it might be more of a B1 feel to it, rather than a B3. Just, just being devil's advocate.
But when you, but when you consider, and again, you can touch on something I was going to bring up, I mean, the, the bottom levels of Court Street fulfill the needs of the tenants, the residents most closely around.
And uptown workers, of course, and campus employees.
Right, well, but to see that's, but that doesn't fuel, that wouldn't fuel something like Stimson, because you have the university right here at the edge of Court Street, you have government offices anchoring here, so you have a lot of office people who will use restaurants during the day. But, you know, I don't know if you could do the same thing with something like Stimson, because, again, you don't, it would take on the nature of the residents around it, but in this case, it would still be, for the most part, students. So you would be, are you encouraging more just eateries, more bars, more whatever, and not developing what you really, I think, are talking about in terms of art, in terms of other commercial activity?
I don't, I don't believe we're directing what business types may be there, but there's some value to think about if you made an area more pedestrian-friendly and accessible. I would say the population is there, between Mill Street and, you know, the Mill Iron, and then the residents on Morris and what have you. But I drive to the post office, too, so.
Well, the post office is just one. I mean, I suspect the bicycle shop gets more bicycles and drivers, the busy day probably gets, and the wine shop probably get a lot of students walking over, as well as people from Mill Street.
Well, people park and go walking up down the street, too.
If, you know, if what you're saying, this is supposed to have a B1 feel, once you, again, we still have this residential, it's allowed on a B1, first floor, B1, it's B2 and B3. So, you know, by saying we require the business on the first floor, and residential on the second floor, we're, we're, we're making it almost like a B1 in nature, eventually, if we keep that trend. I don't know if that's worthwhile doing, I mean, we don't want to call it that, because we'll lose the business on the first floor, but, you know, we now have a blend there.
How about amortization?
What do you mean? A shift over?
Yeah, gradual shift. I'm, I'm not convinced it worked with the sign ordinance, so who am I to?
[laughing]
You know, where you had 10 more years to keep it as it is, and then you had to move?
Well.
That's a strategy, I mean, just as buying.
That strategy just meant that all of them went through, all the ones that went, keep the sign, went to the BZA and got a variance forever.
Mm-hmm.
Huh. You know, that was 10 years to do that.
I didn't vote for it. I mean, I didn't like it at all, but it's another strategy.
I didn't count the votes, I don't remember.
It was just strategy.
Yeah.
In addition to buying up the property, combining to a single unit. Is there any place in Ohio that's done this?
I don't know.
Encouraged, single-family houses that are occupied by renters to go to a one-story business and upper-story residential?
Not that I'm aware of.
I, you know, what I, if I look at Marietta, I drive down Fourth Street Marietta, or Third Street Marietta, and I look at the residential there, a lot of them are professional offices. You know, if you go right down the road there, there's almost like no homeownership in some whole blocks, I think, I'm thinking between Putnam and Scamal all hand, which is like one, the main drag's Putnam going up the street there, but the next one over, next two streets over, in some cases, are mostly just professional, insurance companies, doctors. I have to, I don't know what the parking, I've never tried parking anyplace there, so I don't know what the parking situation is. And that's a different city entirely.
A lot of antique stores on the edge where the buildings aren't very, aren't very expensive, and they can buy cheap space.
But, but again, there's also empty spots on downtown, too. I mean, there's empty.
Oh, yeah, empty stores.
Off and down there.
We have a much better downtown than anything we've mentioned so far.
I'm aware of that.
Thanks to the students.
Yep. But at the same time, it's funny that you look, you'll see the professionals, the residential have turned into professional houses, the businesses have been emptied on downtown. So what's, what's the dynamics that are doing this? I, I just don't know. When you talk about this, how do we, how do we make this, you know, business on the first floor, residential on the second floor? Well, you could take a house and convert it, or you could, you know, but the houses are already being converted in some cities to professionals, and there's no, there's no residential on the second floor.
Set back too far, and it has the side yard, too.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So there you are with a, I mean, I, we're doing what RJ said we should do, and I think it's a good one, but I don't, I don't know how, where it ends.
And then we have to look at the future, if this, what are we talking about, southeastern extension goes through, will that change the nature of Stimson as well, less traveled? Everybody's going to the university to get to point A and point B? Or this become a little backwater street? I doubt it.
It already is, and it.
Stimson?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you're there at 5 o'clock, or whatever the time is that university's letting out, there's a steady stream. You don't want to go out through the roundabout.
Oh, [laughing] that's why we're going to put one there, right?
[laughing]
Catching both sides.
Well, I think that that wouldn't be a bad idea.
Oh, dear.
I don't think it'll ever be a backwater, though, because there's too, there's too much density, too much opportunity to make money there.
Well, are we better off looking at the city in parts, and kind of making observations in terms of where you would like to see, where Paul would like to see things changing, evolving?
That's, that's probably a good idea, I think, actually. It'll just, if you break it down into smaller sections, it's actually easier to comprehend, to get a grip upon a specific corridor or neighborhood.
I mean, we've already identified Stimson, an area that we would want to talk about, Richland.
Richland, maybe Union Street.
I think Columbus Road, that always seems to get a short shrift, but I mean, discussion about, about that, because that's probably one of the areas that the city still has available to, to develop in terms of commercial.
That's very true, right.
I actually did have a while back, if it was unaccounted for, it was.
Thought we saw that.
And then applied the uses and different bulk controls based on that, so it was kind of in a direction we were, you know, the bulk controls on the west side probably shouldn't be where our bulk controls are now, just like the mayor said. Every house over there is not performing. Somebody wanted to rebuild or build on the same footprint, they need to get a variance. So, do you really want to do that? Those kind of questions. So, that's what I did with that map that time, so I had like a R1, I called it R1W, west side, and I got an R1 east side, and then, you know, I just broke it down in those different areas, and established new bulk controls. I don't know what those bulk controls do, I'd take a study to figure out what our average setbacks are, so on and so forth, but.
I think Pogomeyer did that, too. I mean, you did have neighborhoods and talked about. I mean, I'm not saying that they have all the solutions, but at least it's been looked at before, as, as you were doing it, I see, Mr..
Maybe we want to bring that back up again, take a look at it. And again, really, this, we've been piling through the residential already, so the businesses on the other side. I put a note to myself to look at the, again, if you look at the Lancaster piece there, they've got, you know, several different districts, some fit to our, this would be the back couple pages there. I mean, they have a central business district, I have to assume is the B2D.
And it's.
They have a commercial high-density district, CH, and the next page going forward is a commercial general district, and then a commercial neighborhood district. So they're overlapping with their 1s, 2s, 3s. Actually, the task I put down for myself here, it says, look at the zoning, their zoning map, I could not find their zoning map off the top when I was skimming it. And then, actually, I'd be almost interested in taking Google Earth and seeing what the actual landscape looks like there, you know, from the roadside. Maybe we could find some kind of.
Assuming we can hook up my laptop to the compute, to the, we could do that at the next meeting.
Should be.
I have Google Earth installed on there, and so we can do street view, that's, that's an interesting.
I mean, just so, so we say, this is what they call it, and what it looks like eventually. But I don't know if that's the city we want to go. I'm, I'm just looking at the parcel they have and see how it looks in it. And again, the laundry list of all the businesses really turn me off, because again, it comes down to changing businesses each time, trying to fill it in and say, this is fit it. I mean, a yogurt shop or an ice cream shop, I don't know if we need to, I think it's one or the other.
Right, right.
Or a Pilates shop. Pilates shop, or, yeah, I mean, the newer things keep coming in.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Does, does Marietta have a parking garage?
No, they do not. They have a parking lot by Front Street, I think. They have various areas.
A lot more surface parking.
They have on-street parking, and it's, it's not bad.
Right.
Have you ever been there, down for, during the day?
Downtown.
It's not bad. Of course, you know, it's, there's not as much going on, either.
Right, right.
It's one-tenth that's, the school's 10 times smaller than this one.
And Marietta's a county seat, too?
Yes.
Washington County?
I'm trying to think what else, things, it's a little bit different, because it's got a different layout. I know that they've been trying to make that Front Street be almost pedestrian, by, by actually trying to prohibit through traffic, and they have to raise pedestrian walls at this point.
The same size, but it's got a very small school and lots of pedestrian.
Again, I don't know the other cities.
These others, these streets that you named for different corridors, you know, we, we just paved Columbus Road, there's immense interest in that now. We're going to pave Richland, at least that, the majority of it, for our Richland South Avenue. Stimson's out there on the horizon, too.
West Union.
And West, that was the other one, West Union, I think you mentioned that, Paul. And, and, you know, the university's got some plans for possible medical corridor, and I mean, we should probably look at this pretty closely right now. And then, of course, there's going to be an East State Street repair and reconfiguration.
Can you imagine if we rezoned these, or changed the zoning every time we did a new street, repaired a street?
I, well, they're really, they're corridors that are traveling, what do you call them?
Maybe things just need a fresh coat of paint.
What?
Maybe things just need a fresh coat of paint, maybe, Richland Avenue gets done, and maybe we will see some significant change there, where there's, incentivizes redevelopment of real estate. Look at what University Estates, parcels have been selling like crazy up there ever since we got that road all straightened out. Maybe Stimson Avenue, we redevelop that, we clean it up, and, I don't know, maybe it'll happen.
You never know.
Well, our next meeting, do we want to, and I'm not including, I'm just asking, in the future, do we want our next meeting to maybe reflect more discussion of, you know, the city, the various parts of it, before we go forward on, anymore on? I don't know if, in our discussions, if we may even want to go back and revisit the Rs in some way.
You know, the problem is, we've been doing this little bits and pieces at a time. It's every once in a while, I have, I try going back to the start where we were, and reviewing everything. To me, it's more like, personally, I need to do more homework on this. Again, I put myself, you know, I wrote down tasks, do this, and whether I get to it in two weeks is another matter. I think we probably want to look at, start doing little pieces and bits and pieces of location. I think we want to, we, we know we have a problem with, with the blanket, be, you know, R1, 2s, 3s, B1, 2s and 3s. I think what we should be thinking about is, is section by section, how we want to make that overlay for, for Stimson or Richland. But I, I don't know, I mean, I, you know, how are you going to, you know, let's wait to skin a cat.
I was wondering if there's anything in the Rs that we really should do now? I mean, stuff that we agreed on a long time ago, any changes?
Oh, you mean start.
Instead, yeah, just start a piecemeal through council.
Removing hotels and motels? Sorry.
No, I don't know. I don't know, I'm not in the know on that one, but I just meant, there were some, there was a small set of things in the Rs that we thought should go.
Small daycares and bed and breakfasts, sort of, two, two items that keep coming up to my office and the office.
Mm-hmm. Everybody wants a bed and breakfast, they want to try one.
Now, I thought the home-based daycares were.
I had people ask me about it, yeah. You do?
Home occupation daycares are not allowed? I thought they were.
It's just not, the word daycare is not in our code, it's period.
Oh, it needs to be done.
Well, it's occurring, I mean.
I would not want to put any people out of business, either, who are licensed by the state.
Well, let's see, by next meeting, we can get a synopsis of what we think should be changed at the R1s, at the R, on the R level?
I think Char knows, do you know Char? I mean, do you have some stuff from that, from the past?
Review the minutes for what we decided we should modify.
It was very small, I think Paul had, I think it was, there was some, there were some language changes, and I think if we're starting down this path, we're going to be spending a lot of time on it, it'll be so far in the background.
So we should capitalize a vote on and throw it to council?
Yeah.
And see what happens.
It was, it was, only, it wasn't that much, but it was, it was stuff that needed to be done.
Yeah, there was, there was some housekeeping, as far as words, so we went through those definitions, and, and, you know, what they actually meant versus what we think they meant. We did that probably about a year ago.
There goes the council, right there.
I just want to remind everyone, next week is council committee night. If you have anything that you'd like to bring up, that'd be a good time for us to have a little discussion.
I don't think we would be.
I think we need another month. We'll be coming to you.
Or anything piecemeal, you know, let me just, because I'm like, I'm pretty good.
What would you like to see go through?
Well, I'd like the idea of working, what Nancy suggested, working on the, the Rs, the, you know, small stuff, get that out of the way. And I like the idea of what I'm hearing about the overlays and looking at different ideas for different corridors. That, that sounds like a really good way to go. And what was popping in my mind, because of just that kind of person, is, do we have any of this type of information on, on GIS where we can visualize it and look at it and, like you say, overlay it and then see how it is today? How are things functioning right now? And then look, say, okay, well, if we tweak a little bit, how might it look in the future?
You're saying GIS just a, oh, well, the maps are there. Where they, how they function, I don't know if we have a...
Right, we have, we have GIS layers, but you can't manipulate them.
The other function of GIS, of course, is you have all that there now. Okay, now you can begin to model it a little bit.
Right.
Okay, and if we have the database, it's already there, the maps are done. Now that we can do some what-if-ing, but you can't. I don't want to get ahead of myself here, but, you know, we could do a little what-ifs, some scenarios, and the GIS would produce those, those maps.
We, we don't have, we have capacity to do some of that in-house. Like I can do, I can manipulate the shape files, the data, I guess. But we don't have, we don't have the capacity to modeling. Meaning like how would those changes happen? At least not in an easy, basically doing a study. We could do, we could do a large-scale study on that. Right.
But could you do Google Earth next week? You know, put the, I used to have the students do that last year. Go in, go into the town and look at, you know, walk down the street. Let's do it in Lancaster and Zanesville, a couple places. Then they'll stop using it as an example.
We can do that. That's a good point.
I could drop it as an example anytime. I was just looking, you know, the ideas, I'm trying to figure out what will work and what other people have done.
No, I'm just joking, but I, that's one thing where you would get the flavor of what it looks like.
And again...
You'll see those big giant pottery things in Zanesville that they have all over their streets.
What are they?
They're like those painted, like when, when all those cities did painted cows and all that stuff. Zanesville, you know, they've got a long history of pottery in that, that area.
And then there's empty storefronts behind it, which proves that public art also needs a vibrant economy.
So what do we got?
He's gonna do that next week, right?
But we're not denigrating Zanesville.
No, no. No, only one person has said negative things.
Zanesville, there's that hot dog and ice cream parlor in Zanesville, it's great.
They have a phenomenal museum up there.
Oh, yes.
It's just spectacular.
And a Y Bridge and other stuff.
The Y Bridge.
And a OU branch.
Dawes Arboretum's not that far away. The Wilds.
So we're gonna do those two things, residential on.
Do we have cases for next meeting?
I had a phone call earlier this morning in regards to the, the church, the life assembly church that they're asking to come possibly and do some open communication stuff soon. Don't know what date. I told them they probably should meet with Paul and I first with the, they've met with us once already, but they haven't had any preliminary drawings. Apparently they're working on that now. So, but they did call me right before we came here and their attorney wants to meet with us next week and just kind of do some stuff.
They still have questions of elevation and easement, I believe?
They're searching for PUD possibly, but I think they want to go six, seven stories. And I'm not so sure that a PUD allows for that change in height. So they still may need to get a variance through that. I gotta do a little research on it. So.
How big is that lot? PUDs are two acres, I don't think.
It's at least three acres, I think.
Close to three acres.
They own all the buildings around there, the same company. And all the other buildings are, what, six, seven stories right now? So they're just wanting to match what's there.
And it used to be part of that conference? Back in the day?
Yes.
Other questions. When you talk about trying to see how things work and what is on GIS, we really don't parse down to the setbacks. I guess we get building footprints, I guess, would be the best we could overlay. But actually trying to say, okay, where is it? You know, I, I don't know if you could actually add a level of 25-foot setbacks for the buildings that's required in code. The other question, I think we renewed our GIS contract with Ilgard. And I thought, well, there's discussion of looking around to see if there's some other service we want to go with. So sometime we can do that.
Yeah.
And still, when you got, the Arts Parks Recreation Plan is at its last final, that's Thursday, right?
That is correct.
Arts Parks and Advisory Recreation, Arts Parks and Recreation Advisory Monthly Meeting is tomorrow night, 6:00 or 6:30?
Five thirty.
I was gonna be late. 5:30.
Not tomorrow, but we will be. Yeah, yeah, that's what we're gonna be discussing at that meeting.
They invited past members of the board to come hear this report, so.
I think discussion is a presentation to council and then a public hearings.
I believe so, yeah.
One, both if not one or the other.
I would think both are needed. A presentation to council will be needed just to get the plan adopted at a minimum. But there's also, I'm 99% confident that we're going to be doing a public forum as well just to get education and discuss what, what's in the plan and all of that.
Which one, which one do you first?
I will defer to the Rec Advisory Board to determine whatever path they think is best. Probably public, a public open house first and then, and then present council. But whatever they think is best.
Because essentially, I think you'd be adopting the final plan.
That's right.
Right.
Don't know about...
More basketball? I could not get my racquetball court in there, no matter how hard I tried.
I've heard.
Oh, yeah. Indoor soccer.
Okay, so our next meeting, let's see, first of all, the communications and the things in summary. For the next meeting, we're gonna be talking maybe a little bit more about some of the sections. Is there a particular section that we want to start off with?
It sounded like we wanted to have a compilation of all the R stuff we want to change, the busy bits we want to do, right?
You know, I'd like to see Google Earth, at least for five minutes, of the places that, as we're talking about changing over. The ones that are most, you think are most like ours. You know, most of the, the one that looks the most, the ones toward the end of the, of the zoning chapters that are not downtown, so you get away from the vacant building problem, but are neighborhood businesses. Could we try that? You know, neighborhood businesses in either Lancaster or Zanesville. You know, in Google, if you just go in and you pull it up and then you walk down the street. It's pretty, you've also...
So you're gonna find the...
I don't know about peering in the windows.
You gotta find the city of 25,000 or the university in extreme topographical difficulty.
Right, separate of any section. Is there any particular section that we want to talk about town or?
You mean the discussion?
Yeah, just for the sake of the discussion. I don't know if we wanted to stay on Stimson, since we're kind of talking about that or if we wanted to break out to something else.
I'll bring that map that I drew up, that zoning map.
That would be a good starting point right there.
So is Stimson there, okay.
So maybe, maybe some homework then would be just for planning commissioners and co-director and planner and planning and development member to think about Stimson Avenue. Maybe just kind of, you know, do a critical analysis of it as a...
So walk it, bike it and drive it.
Walk it a little bit, yeah, weather permitting, of course. Probably safer to walk right now because of potholes anyway, but. They're everywhere, nothing you can do about them.
But we're also gonna be, you know, when we talk about geography or topography, whatever, I think when we've talked about, well, do we want to push the setbacks further away from the street or add to it? For instance, like that Sun and Fun on Richland, really kind of restricted by the fact that he's got all that rock behind him, that elevation there. So it's just like, how do you allow a, a businessperson or a resident to maximize their, their property? Versus, again, that aesthetics that you were probably talking, since, since really, that's probably what, what people might object to most about that building was just the aesthetics that it seems like it's right on top of the street itself, so.
Again, as you say, it's rock face behind it.
And it's part, there's parking behind it, too. That's good.
And you get some of that on Stimson. Stimson, well, the Stimson Garden. Things of that nature. Not, not, as you get up a little bit towards the, the top of it, when you get up to the State Street end of it, not so much the, the back end, but... So we're comfortable then with the Rs that we want to pass on to the council and Stimson Avenue?
Let's review them and then take a vote.
Right. Let's see. Well, that concludes the communications unless anybody else has any other comments they would like to make. Opportunities for citizens to speak? Did you have anything that you wanted to add in here?
He's not a citizen, he's a councilperson.
Uh, let's see. Announcements and other business? I think you mentioned the meeting.
It's just the Arts Parks Recreation Advisory Board.
Okay.
And then I guess if we were moving back to Thursdays, hopefully Chair Bittner will be able to return.
Yeah, he's in some kind of exile, I guess.
Uh, let's see. That would be what, March?
This is sixth here?
So Thursday, right, we're back to Thursdays.
Okay, so March 6th, okay. Anything else in terms of announcements, other business? Our next meeting then will be March 6th, 2014.[1770.32]